Good evening. I call this meeting of December 21st, 2021 to order. First item on the agenda, we have two citizens who wish to speak during our public comment period. The first one is via Zoom. That would be Andy Weiser. And I will note that Mr. Nelson is coming to us via Zoom as well. Hi, Marcus. Good evening. Hello, Andy. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay, terrific. And we can hear you as well. Ground rules before we begin, we have a public comment period for the public to come in and speak to the board of anything within our purview. We ask that it be limited by our rules to three minutes, and it will be uninterrupted three minutes. You may receive comments from the board afterwards, or you may not. We will take it under advisement. So with that, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Select Board, and thank you for having me this evening. I am a longtime Needham resident, and I'm actually one of four people here in town who are members of volunteers with a group called Communities for Restorative Justice. And I'm coming to you for a long time. I have been wanting our town to join Communities for Restorative Justice. And I was spurred into sort of this new action and further action and reaching out to folks with the incident that happened at the high school on Holland Road and at the Cervante Bakery last week. I don't know anything about who did what or where, you know, any of those details, but knowing what I know about restorative justice and with the part of it happening in the high school, I thought that this would be an excellent, perhaps, initial case for the town to, for the, actually, it's the police department that has to do it, but to take this on. And I have reached out to, I reached out to the superintendent and the police chief, and I actually have spoken, I've received emails back from both of them. And Chief Sutter and I hope to, along with a colleague, Paula Dickerman, who's another volunteer, we hope to speak within a few, in a few weeks. So I found that out this afternoon. He reached out this afternoon or reached back to us this afternoon after I'd said I wanted to do this. But I, I do think restorative justice is something that if we bring it to town is worthy of wider knowledge about it than just the police, just the police force. So the group that we volunteer with is actually about 21 years old. It started in Concord, and there are currently 31 cities and towns, along with three district attorney offices, that have engaged them, their services. And most, the vast majority of the crimes that are diverted from the criminal justice system to restorative justice are with minors. Then then, with the second most being with young people between the ages of 18 and 25, although there are currently cases with, you know, with adults, with middle-aged and, and older adults as well. And I spurred on this, especially, I guess, with this incident that happened in, assuming, and I don't, clearly don't know, but I'm assuming that the piece that happened in the high school must be a student. And having worked with, in a few cases, in the cases I've worked in and in the role I've been in, hearing about so many cases, the growth that I see in these young people that go through the restorative justice process as compared to a criminal justice process is, is just pretty phenomenal. They get to learn, know, learn about themselves, understand themselves in a way that you just wouldn't. I mean, I, my kids, I grew up here, grew up in this town, and I guess I feel lucky as a parent that none of the, no one from the police department ever brought our kids home and knocked on the door and said, you know, make sure this doesn't happen again. But I know that with sort of minor things in our town, that's what often happens. And so like an example of a case that I
Andy, just, we are running low on time, and I've given you a little bit of leeway. If you could just wrap it up in the next minute. And what I would like, if you could send some, you know, to the town manager, your documents about your cause, that would be terrific. And that way, we could read about it at another time. And I understand this is a passion of yours, but we do have a limited time here.
Oh, right. I, I do, I do understand. Yeah, okay. Thank you. I understand. So I see tremendous growth from, in individuals, and I, I just really believe that nothing comes out of, or very little comes out of, people going and entering the criminal justice system. And the recidivism rate is so much less, and people learn so much more from this process. So I, I guess I would just push our town to do it, and I've seen it work with crimes that are minor. You know, juveniles doing some minor, like taking their parents' car. It's not really minor because it could result in problems, but things like taking their parents' cars in the middle of the night when they don't have a license yet. Two really serious crimes of, in one town where some young people, it was kind of inadvertent, but they burned down an entire town playground. In another town, it very, this was very premeditated. A couple of young people wrote really antisemitic and racial slurs on many of the town buildings. So it's a whole range of crimes that get treated this way. And I just think people learn a lot from it, with Nwari happening in town and the rapid response team trying to get up and running. This would be a great addition to all of those new initiatives happening. So thank you for your time, and I will send all the, I will send links and information along.
We appreciate that. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your comments. Have a great night.
You too.
Okay, our second appointment of the evening is Mr. Ross Donald. I see him here in attendance. Mr. Donald, you can approach. And like I said to the prior speaker, we try to limit this to three minutes. And I know you were here last time, and I'd like to hear what you have to say, if it's something different than we heard before. But the floor is yours.
It's a variation on a theme. I did want to respond to Dan's comment last time, and thank you very much for offering something. But it was along the lines of Needham Housing Authority has nothing to do with the town, or the town has nothing to do with Needham Housing Authority, something to that effect. And apartment, apart from the Boyd, the boards, the select boards, power to appoint a resident to the Needham Housing Authority, which you waived before. There's all the cultural connections. It's very difficult to see that there's not a connection. In fact, the idea that the town has nothing to do with the housing authority was best expressed by a prominent public person at Town Hall who said ironically, humorously, "We don't have anything to do with them." Now, I took that as a joke. It was an ironic statement. But it still had me question, who's the "we" and who's the "them"? You know? Am I part of the "we" because I'm here, but I'm also "them"? None of you are "them" unless you have some sort of sympathy or connection with, with your fellow human beings, I suppose. I don't know. But so, but I did want to make a comment about bullying. This is something that I've just been discovering. It's not, it is new in the sense that it may relate to something like hazing. You know, that's come up in the news, and that's a form of bullying, I suppose. I'm not up on all the psychotechnology of this. But that is viewed by some people as a way to keep an organization together by bully people. If you act as a tyrant, you can, you can make the trains run on time, for instance. So, but that's not really the best approach, according to the people that are looking into these things. Penny Kirk, about five years ago, when she was hired as a social worker at Needham Housing Authority, attended a conference and wrote an article for the newsletter about bullying. So it's been around for a long time. The closest, one way to compare things, I can go to court and get an order of protection against harassment. And that appears to be dealing, I mean, I'm not an expert in any of these matters, but that appears to be individuals repeatedly abusing or maligning, or whatever, other individuals. That's the harassment thing. And it's not all sexual. It might be just workplace abuse and things like that. By comparison, bullying or mobbing, as it's been called, is about groups of people, often targeting vulnerable people or people that are sticking out. So that's a kind of comparison. And there's a lot more laws dealing with, say, domestic abuse, for instance. That's a harassment issue. It's not a bullying issue, although the characteristic is the same. Most of the issues, the discussion around bullying relates to apparently labor, labor and management issues. I'm looking at all those issues. I'm reading a lot of articles and so forth. But look, replacing labor with resident and management with management.
Mr. Donald, just as I said with the prior speaker, if you could wrap up, you have about a minute left on it.
Yeah.
Giving you some leeway. Yep.
One of the things that I've been, another point, slightly different point, hugely different point. The Galloway trial, I've been studying that. And Tammy Galloway moved into public housing, not as an elder, but as a disabled person. She was underage. And I've kind of, I'm playing with the, an observation, your conclusion maybe, that if a person is moved into public housing, if they need things, if they can't be made part of the community, and they become a threat to themselves and other people, there's a failure somewhere. Now, the housing authorities say, "We don't have anything to do with that. All we're going to do is collect the rent," or whatever. So the, just in conclusion, please comment.
Yep.
This was from the assessment survey residence a few years ago, 2020, I think it was 2019, actually. This was a comment made by one of the residents. There were myriad issues, the question. Lack of respect from staff, lack of concern and/or follow-through when residents don't cause problems for other residents, substandard living conditions at units. And they're referred to sick building syndrome, and that's one of the terms. Fear among residents, and also is that caused by, one of the issues, I'll just read this. Not feeling safe in the building or in the community, lack of maintenance of common areas. All this makes living in Needham Housing Authority traumatizing at worst and makes us feel unimportant and disrespected at best. It's a stressful place to live.
Thank you, Mr. Donald, for those comments. And I will turn it over to the board. Any comments or discussion? Mr. Matthews.
Only, only briefly. And again, not, not to debate.
Yeah, I appreciate whatever you have to say, Dan.
Okay. You, you you live at the authority, and, and there are many issues, we know. And you're very active in your role as a tenant, too, and in, in, in the public, and in the public arena, talking to people and trying to make, to, to, to work according to, as we all do, according to our likes to improve things. And there are difficult issues. But the housing authority has a management structure that's prescribed by law to try to address those things when individuals that have specific responsibilities and rights of appeal from decisions that those folks make. I'm, I think my main argument is, and not to repeat it, your best recourse, to my understanding, is to work through that system, difficult as it may be to address these, rather than go to, to other boards, which, yes, every, we're in a community together here, but each agency has its own set of responsibilities. And if that system isn't working the right way, you, your first recourse should be to work, work within it. And we know you'll have opportunity to talk to what you're, the chairman of the housing authority, because he's here, although he's here on another matter. So you guys can talk about it later. But I don't, I'm only speaking, not to brush off what you're saying, but to try, maybe to encourage, to, one, to show that we do, we are listening and we hear you. But the, the, the housing authority, in my view, it, it needs some support from the town. We try to provide that. But to, for us to provide a backseat driver for issues that are very difficult to begin with, I'm not sure that, that, that that's the best. And that may not be the best metaphor, and it may not be the best resource. But I do know that you've got an executive director, you've got a board and staff that work on these things, and the whole thing is overseen by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any further comment? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Donald, for coming in.
Thanks for your comment, but you can't push it back on me. All I'm doing is publicizing the issues. If your response is, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Don. I don't want to get into debate, Mr. Matthews.
I'm not pushing anything on you. I'm just stating, you've come in, stated your exercise, you're right.
I'm ready. I accept the challenge.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, public hearing notice, 6 o'clock, Eversource grant of location, 16 Petrini Circle, Ms. Calendar, Eversource via Zoom. And sir, you are the, okay, why don't you join us here at the table, please? And we'll get to you in a moment. Ms. Calendar, the floor is yours on this petition.
Good evening. Eversource is petitioning the town to install 11 feet of conduit into Petrini Circle, and that is to provide new underground service to 16 Petrini Circle.
Thank you, Ms. Calendar. To the town manager, Ms. Fitzpatrick, it's my understanding that work was performed prior to this grant of location. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the building commissioner and town's electrical inspector have indicated they have not inspected this yet.
Okay, thank you for that information. So as you are probably aware now, the proper method is to come to this board for a grant of location after public hearing, and then the work can commence. Prior to, starting the work prior to that is a violation of our rules. And the reason we have these public hearings is because we own the roadways, or ownership in the roadways as a town. We want to hear from anyone who's affected, as far as in a but, or any other member of the public that wishes to comment on this. So before I ask you to tell, well, why don't I ask you right now, before I open this up to the public, can you please explain to the board? And I don't know, if you would please state your name right now. So, Ms. You're the homeowner. Okay, sir. Okay, and you're the electrician?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alexander Stelmacher.
You're the electrician as well. Okay. Who is going to be speaking on this application? Okay, please do.
So, you know, we, we have done so many houses around the area, and, you know, we do a lot of houses in Newton. This is, you know, we haven't done an underground service for a while in Needham, so I didn't know how the process, new process goes. You know, we do, we have done about 20 to 25 houses last year in Newton. And we, you know, we haven't run into this issue at all before. This is the first time that we had this problem. I didn't know that we have to have a grant of location first in Needham before we do it. So, you know, it's just misunderstanding and miscommunication. It's our fault that we did it, and we're sorry. I mean, you know, now we learn from the process, and this won't happen ever again.
And your company is what, April?
April.
April Electric. Who is the general contractor on this? Did you pull the permit?
I pulled the permit.
Okay.
And Carrie Malone actually pulled this particular permitting question. I think he was in touch with somebody today. There was, it was a miscommunication, from what I understand. Carrie did know the grant of location was necessary, but I don't think we understood exactly what the question was. We just, we didn't know.
You're the general contractor on this property. You pulled the permit as a homeowner.
I pulled the permit as a homeowner.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to speak on this application, either via Zoom or here in the audience? Seeing and hearing none, discussion from the board on this application. Yes, Mr. Matthews?
The, the town manager has informed us that everything is in order with this application.
No, it's not.
No, what needs to be done?
The board wants to approve it. We can, you could do so subject to the building commissioner and the electric inspectors' final sign-off and authorize me to issue it. Otherwise, you can continue the hearing to January.
Right. So I think in front of us, we really have two options. It would be to continue this hearing until such time that we have an inspection on this, and that might, that would include the inspector going out and looking at it. It's already been covered, is that right? So excavation and review. If we wanted to expedite this, we could sign the grant of location and have it held until such time that it's inspected and therefore released, so you wouldn't have to come back to this body. I think I would support that, figuring that it's your first time doing this, and we're, you know. We have, I will say this, though. We have tried to be as clear as we can with contractors on how the system is going. In the past, there has been some confusion. But at this point, now documentation, I think it should be crystal clear how this method is supposed to work. But saying that, just open it up to the board of how we wish to proceed. Mr. Matthews, and then.
That conditional motion to, to approve. I think the applicants understand, you, you know, the thing is that this is your first rodeo with this, but it isn't ours. We have people sitting in your seats all the time. And the thing is that the the underground is actually an easement, permanent easement in the street, and that's to be recorded at the registry of deeds. And if there were any problem with it, it could disrupt getting your occupancy permit. So we insist that the, that the hearing come before the digging. But under the circumstances, and to try to help everybody out, I'm willing to do it that way, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let's start. We have a motion. Is there a second before discussion? Okay, a motion, a second discussion. Ms. Cooley.
I guess I would like to note, Carrie Malone is a builder who's been in town for a long time. I'm not certain whether we've had Carrie involved with a prior case.
I know Carrie well, and I've known she's done a lot of work in town, and I, it would shock me that if he were, you know, he would do this not knowing there was a grant of location. So he is above board, and something got lost in the cracks, but.
It definitely got lost in the cracks. I think he was asking.
Yeah, it was, it was.
And it was just.
Right, okay. Any further discussion? Yeah, Mr. Keen.
Real quick, what's the timeline for inspections?
No, it hasn't. So it's really up to the building.
Okay, so we need to electric inspected and have the, okay.
If we move forward with this vote, you would need to call the building department, schedule an electrical inspection, right? You, you know, although, you know. Yes, exactly. Yes, correct. Any further, Marcus?
Yeah, I had one. I think Kevin, yes, I think Kevin already asked the question. But I think in the short time that I've been on the board, I believe this is maybe the second time that it's happened without approval. And the way that the board works in being and trying to do what's the best interest to everybody to move forward with, you know, not having them come back and making sure everything, all, you know, ducks are in a row and things go well with the inspection to move forward. But I think the board has been, you know, really fair in these situations and continues to be. So just knowing that it seems like it was an honest mistake, and, you know, something like this, especially with these parties involved, should never happen again. You know, I feel confident moving forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Ms. Cooley.
So I understand that this is a new process we've put in place. I don't know what changed from the old process, but I am wondering if we have considered whether there's a way to reach out to the electricians who have done business with the town.
So we have created a new system where Eversource will provide us the same sketch they provide to the electrician and the permit holder. And the building department now contacts the permit holder and tells them they need a grant of location. So that was done. They were told not to build without the grant of location, as I hear, as you hear tonight. It was a misunderstanding of that or a miscommunication of that, but the process has, the new process has started working.
If I may add, I actually took the call about a grant of location, that call came after the work was done. So it was the first time that I heard of it. We didn't really even understand, you know, and they said.
That's why, as I said.
We did, we filed, we did everything we could, and we did the work. And so I called in a panic because the, the building department called me saying, "You can't do anything without a grant of location." I said, "I think the work's been done. I, I didn't know. So I'm sorry. What, what can we do?" And so, and then I think there was connection with Carrie.
Yeah, that's when we tried, you know, to, to figure out with Eversource, and we never actually had it. We thought we actually did. As I said, we have done that a lot in Newton, so it was just something new to us, new process over here in Needham.
Right, okay. Well, now you know.
We'll, we'll have an after-action with Eversource, because this is a good test case to see whether we got the sketch later or, you know, where that is. So we'll contact them and get them back in.
Great, thank you. I know with winter coming and winter work, you try to get things as spread as you can in your business. But you have been warned. And any further discussion? Okay, we come now to the vote. It'll be roll call. Mr. Nelson is on Zoom. We have a motion as second. Mr. Matthews.
Yeah.
Ms. Cooley.
Yes.
Mr. Keen.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Yeah.
And the chair votes yes. So we will have this held by the town manager, or I guess maybe the, I guess it would be held by you. And then once it's inspected and signed off, you can pick it up at the town manager's office, and we'll go from there, okay? Thank you. Have a great night. Thank you. Ms. Calendar, have a great night.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you.
You as well.
Thank you.
Okay, consenting appointments. We have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Matthews.
Yeah.
Ms. Cooley.
Aye.
Mr. Keen.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
And the chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, all new alcohol restaurant license, PM Story Corp. Doing business as Little Spoon. I ask Mr. and Mrs. Chan Prappa and Attorney Jenta up to the table. Good evening. Okay, so you're here on a alcohol license for an existing business, which I hear is delicious. And I will turn the floor over to you. Attorney Jenta.
Thank you very much. So with me this evening is Apirak Chan Prappa, who is the owner of the restaurant, and his brother, Apisha Chan Prappa, who is proposed to be the manager for the, for the purposes of the liquor license.
I'm sure it's going to do as you get. Apirak?
Apilak, yes.
And.
Apisha.
Apisha. I'm going to, I'm going to work on it. Thank you.
Okay, so, so, so just by way of background, of course, Apirak has run a restaurant in Newton Center, Four Spoons Thai Restaurant, for approximately the last six years. And Apisha has run multiple restaurants for at least the last, I think, 11 years or so. So that between the two of them, they have quite an amount of experience with respect to restaurants and, and with liquor licenses as well. So they're not new or novices to the game. So, and in fact, they actually have come before the board once before on an application. Unfortunately, that was kicked back as recommended to be disallowed because of an issue with the financing. And it was a little bit of an odd thing in that when they put the, when the application first went in, they included the cost to do all the construction. But of course, that was somewhat separate because the restaurant was completed, and it's been open, and it's been operating. And that's all part of that. And actually, the liquor piece is a really small piece of this. This is not, if you've been in, it's a relatively small restaurant. It's a 60-seat restaurant with approximately 1,662 square feet on the first floor. So it's a, it's a small kind of a boutique restaurant. There's a small bar area with, I think, three or four seats. So it's really, you know, this is not like 100 or 120-seat large restaurant. So for them to add the liquor license is actually kind of a small thing. They don't have to change the floor plan. They don't have to change any of the interior space. All they really have to do is purchase glasses, maybe some bottle openers, you know, wine openers, whatever. And that, and then, then they're actually the beer and the wine. That's it. And, and just to say, to make it clear, too, they're asking for a beer and wine license as opposed to an all beverages license. So, so when the first one So, so when the first one got bounced, it was based on sort of the, the way the financing was set up for the whole restaurant. But now that's been clarified in this application to make it clear that this is just to add the liquor. It's a smaller dollar amount and actually, Apirak has the financing well more than what he really requires for that. So, so that piece has been addressed. So, but just to remind the board, with respect to what this is, so it is a beer and wine license, as I said, for this small restaurant. The restaurant has, obviously, the fact that it's opening it past the building inspection, so it has the required exits, entrances, safety placards and all that kind of thing, so that it's conforming all the way around with respect to that. So, you know, basically, this is really just for the liquor component before you this evening. Specifically with Apirak, said he, he's operated the Four Spoons Thai Restaurant in Newton Center for the last six years or so with a liquor license, no suspensions, no violations, no issues. And Apisha hasn't had any issues with any of his restaurants either. So you have basically two upstanding gentlemen that know what they're doing and will run this as a, will run the license the way it's supposed to be.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Jenta. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience here live or via Zoom who wishes to speak on this application? Hearing and seeing none? Yes.
In the vote, it does say all alcohol, so just make sure that the board's approval is for beer and wine. Apologize for that. Under A, they suggested vote A.
Thank you. Typically on these applications, the board has been very friendly with giving out these licenses because we want the businesses to succeed. Over the past month, I believe, we've had some violations in town. So there's a concern as what, where I am sitting, about these licenses and how they're going to be handled and managed so that we don't have continued violations. Attorney Jenta speaks of your track record in Newton, which I think is very favorable and, you know, of looking through your application, you seem well qualified. So I'm supportive of this application. And I'll turn it over to members of this board, but I just, with the caveat of making sure that everything is complied with because we do not want to see you back in here on any type of violation. So it's, it's very important. It's always been important. But it's just come to our recent memory that people are not complying the way we wish they would. And that'll be dealt with at a different time with them. But I did want to bring it up tonight because it's apropos. Mr. Matthews.
If I can, can add a little bit to that. The Needham used to be, didn't have, back in the day, for quite a while after prohibition, did not have alcohol licenses at all. And now we have them because people want them, but safety and, and not being a problem for the public is important and compliance with the law. Now, you gentlemen are both going to be working in this. Right, yes. Okay. And then Apirak, Apirak?
Yes.
You're going to be the manager of record on this. Okay. So, but, what the chairman is saying is so, we want you to succeed with, you're, you have great reputation, great track record. But we don't want, cannot have, cannot abide any violations of the liquor laws. And you, Apirak, in particular, under the law, which counsel can explain to you, you're personally liable for any misconduct under the, under the, the fact that it's incorporated. It doesn't make any difference. You're personally liable. So you've got to make sure that things are done right. And I'll tell you, here right now, is I'm certain that at some point, some young person is going to test and see if they can get a beer or whatever at your place. And you need to card anybody. You need to check identification for people who are even close to the age, just to protect yourself. Because I will get, I will tell you for a fact that on one, on at least one occasion, and maybe as often as once a year, that young person is going to be an agent of the Needham Police Department. And if your, your personnel, and I know sometimes it's hard to get staff in and train them and have people do what they want or businesses fast or there's a lot going on with, you know, this pandemic is a real burden on everyone. But if your person makes a sale without asking for proof of age, you'll be in here on a violation. And we don't want that. You don't want that. We have about 30 licensees in town and one of the reasons we're going very slow right now is that several of them did what I was just telling you about. They didn't follow the rules. Some of them, it's a repeat offense and it's not tolerable. And that's all in the hands of the town manager to make a recommendation as to what, how we should approach that. But ultimately, your businesses really depend, a big part of your business depends even for the customers that aren't drinking, to have that as an option. You don't want to have a, our licenses been suspended for a week sign up in the window. You're trying to run your business. So please, we want you to succeed, but be careful and operate inside the law. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Further discussion? Yes, Ms. Cooley.
So I'm just going to reiterate one point in a slightly different way. You already have this, but I'm going to give you my permission to card everybody and to take a look at all those licenses.
Okay.
We're very excited to have you in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Just.
Yes, what's your? Correct. Is there a motion?
Some more, more approval with the adjustment that it's a beer and wine.
Okay, so we have a, a motion A for the application approval and then a determination that this is not detrimental to the educational spiritual activities of First Parish of Needham, Unitarian Universalist, First Church of Christ Scientist and First Baptist Church. There's a motion in a second. Kate, we haven't received anything from the House of Worship, right? And Mr. Jenta, you haven't received any?
Nope.
Negative comments from us. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Come to the vote. Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Keen?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Best of luck. I hear terrific things about your restaurant. Keep up the good work. Attorney Jenta, thank you.
Thank, thank you all.
Have a great night. Next item on the agenda, Needham Housing Authority update. Mr. Foster is here in person. And we also have, let's get that Zoom up. We're going to introduce, I have Ms. Mederos, executive director, and two consultants, Ms. Moran and Ms. Yawson. Or Yawson, and we'll pull them up on Zoom and get an introduction. Yes, not joined. Okay, so we only have, I see, we have Ms. Moran and Ms. Mederos?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good evening. Why don't we start with introductions? We know who you are, but the public may not. I will start with you, Ms. Mederos.
Hi, I'm Angie Mederos and I'm the executive director of Needham Housing Authority.
Thank you. And Ms. Moran?
Thank you. I'm Margaret Donnelly Moran. I work with the Cambridge Housing Authority. And Needham Housing Authority has contracted with the Cambridge Housing Authority to provide developments, consulting services for the repositioning and restoration of their public housing, both their federal public housing and interstate public housing.
Okay, thank you for that. And Mr. Foster, you can introduce yourself and then the floor is yours.
I am Reg Foster. I'm chair of the Needham Housing Authority.
Great.
Great. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. I really appreciate it. The purpose of this briefing is just to let you know that last summer, the Needham Housing Authority launched the modernization and, and redevelopment initiative. And we've been making rounds to various town boards to give you an initial briefing on what we're up to and also provide an initial opportunity for questions and comments and guidance. In your briefing packet there, I'm going to try to go through it as quickly as I can and not dwell on much of anything, so we provide as much time for the questions and comments as we can do. So by way of background, we have in the first couple of pages, the management summary of the 2019 facility master plan that we did. And a couple of years doing that, we did that with the assistance of some CPA funds. I, we have a new member of the board. Welcome, Kevin. So I brought you a copy. And one of the things that we did when Marcus and Latchme came on board a few months ago, when time permits, I know you're trying to get up to speed on a lot of things, but we're happy to get you caught up on an individual briefing on what's been going on for the last few years here. So in that facility's master plan, and again, the management summary is there, it lays out a vision for completely either modernizing or redeveloping all of our units. And it assessed the condition of the existing units. It proposed several different projects. It identified potential funding sources as they existed in 2018 or 2019 when we did the plan. And then the pandemic hit, but I will come back to that in a minute. The page five on your briefing is the one-page summary of what was proposed for modernization and redevelopment. And so there were five projects. Project number one was for our seabed way development and our Captain Robert Cook development. They were built around 1980, so they're about 40 years old. They're kind of aging. There's, they, they basically needed what we would call a gut renovation, a complete overhaul and modernization of everything. The, the chart there shows that we serve 48, 46 senior or disabled residents and 30 families there. And part of what we did in 2019 is to estimate the total cost of doing that project and the amount of funds that would be needed that could be applied for and obtained from non-needham sources and, and the amount of monies that we might contemplate coming from Needham-based sources like the Humanity Preservation Act funds. Projects two and three are a two-phase project to go into the High Rock Homes estate development. There are 60 single-bedroom, two or three, a single-family, two or three-bedroom family residents there. And, and it would be very similar to what we did in 2005 to 2008 that some of us are here familiar with, where we took each one of those buildings that are on 10,000-square-foot lots and tore them down and replaced them with duplexes. Those buildings were built in 1950, plus or minus. They were housing for returning veterans. They are 70-plus years old and there are no way to bring them up to code or bring them into the 21st century in terms of expectations for affordable housing, except to do more of what we did for the High Rock State, High Rock Homes project here. So that's projects two and three, and there are the cost estimates for those. So basically, 30, 60 total units would turn into 120 units as a result of that project. The fourth project is Linden Street and Chambers Street, two developments that are side by side in the, right across the street from High Rock School. And those are built in the late 50s and early 60s and again, probably need to be totally redeveloped and replaced with a like number of modern senior and disabled housing. That's the biggest project cost-wise and it's the most challenging one because the funding sources are not as obvious there as they are with these other projects. The fifth project is there's enough room on the seabeds Cook site, which is up Northern Central Avenue, just before you get to 128, where the TV tower is, if everybody knows where that is. That's a 10-acre site and there's room to put another 61-unit building there, which in 2018, 2019, we were contemplating would be a senior disabled housing building. But of course, that's going to be looked at again. So you see the totals there. The, you know, we are talking about overall a plan, a vision that will take about five or 10 years to do, where we renovate all of our remaining 336 total units. And in fact, increase it to 457 units of deeply affordable house, a 36% increase. And if you add up all the numbers, it's a 130-plus million-dollar expenditure for construction and all the other associated costs. That's in 2018, 2019 dollars. But 125 million of that would come from external funding sources. That means not from the Needham taxpayer in one, any way, shape or form. I should also note the notes at the bottom there, which is, things are changing. They don't reflect the huge increases in construction costs that have taken place in the last year. And funding sources are evolving, although they're still there. And they don't reflect, you know, potential opportunities should, you know, the federal Build Back Better Infrastructure Program legislature ever get through. In, after that pandemic hiatus in, you know, for a year or two, we put out an RFP and I'm on page six in the end of April. And the most important thing to know is after rigorous 30B process, we hired the Cambridge Housing Authority. We got actually two pretty good, working out great proposals and one really great proposal from the Cambridge Housing Authority. And what was terrific about it was that not only were they highly qualified, but they'd already been doing this sort of consulting work before for several other housing authorities in the last two or three years. In the last 10 years, they've done a lot of this work. So it's, you know, sort of, you know, the analogy is that we were able to, on an outsourcing basis, acquire a 25-person planning and development team that's all Cambridge Housing Authority employees, that we can use them to get these very ambitious plans done. We got going in August of 2021, I'm on page seven now. There are sort of the key deliverables there that I outlined out of our first task order. We've done about half of them and the ones in boldface. We are about halfway through the first phase here. Part of the first phase was to identify for the CPA funding cycle, which begins on December 1st, earlier this month, what monies we actually really need to get going with this overall plan. And on December 1st, we submitted four funding applications that are available on the CPC website. One of them was to, the first one was to develop various analyses, proper existing conditions reports and property surveys that are needed this spring and this summer if we're going to do the seabeds and cook projects and the High Rock Homes projects that I summarized on the previous page. The second one is to really attack what's been the top priority of the town since 2004. I think it first appeared in one of, you know, our earlier plans and reports of the town, which is, how do we go about redeveloping Linden and Chambers? We've got the number of, couple of, three conceptual plans, but now we really need to develop the schematic design and do a bunch of other pre-development activities to come up with something real that then we can shop around for funding. And that's something we've been working on in parallel. In, in that regard, I would just want to give a shout out to our state rep Denise Gerilic, who's been working closely with us and was able to get $2.75 million for the Needham Housing Authority for Linden Chambers in both in a combination of the recent bill that was just signed by Governor Baker, the ARPA funds bill, there's 100, 1.25 million in there. And then in the Partnership for Growth Bill or the Economic Development Act of January 2021 that was passed, there's another 1.5 million there. So we are very grateful to Representative Garlic. And I should say right off the bat, the funds can't be spent for any of these four purposes that we put the CPA for funding applications in, in case that occurred to anybody as I go through here. The third proposal is a proposal that's been under consideration, very raised ways shapes and formed by the town for three or four years. And that is there is a 3.5 acre property on East Militia Drive, right across from the Charles River Center that has 12 existing three-bedroom bungalows on it that was occupied by military families up until the end of 2019. And, and then declared as surplus by the army. And there has been much discussion in the town about what the right destiny for this property is. The army is going to put out an RFP for the highest and best bidder sometime in the first quarter. First half of next year is the best information we've had. Those units in their present condition were suitable for, you know, military families. And they're very similar to the kind of housing stock we have at the High Rock Estates area. We could also envision using it as a swing space for these other projects we plan to do because to do these gut renovations or the redevelopments, we have to move people out temporarily and then move them back in. So that's one of the applications, number three there. And the fourth one is for an assistant director, executive director position. One of the things over the last two or three years up to the present, we've been cautioned that we need to bring on more management capacity at the Needham Housing Authority. The next few pages are slides starting on page nine, sort of outlining some of the capabilities and qualifications of the Needham Housing Authority. I'm not going to go through them in detail now. I call your attention to slide number 11, which shows the capabilities of the Cambridge Housing Authority Planning and Development Department and a brief summary of their qualifications. Like I said, they were unanimously and way out front when we selected them. Not to mention for the reason that Margaret Moran, who's here with us tonight to answer questions, actually played a very key role of doing the High Rock Homes redevelopment project from 2005 and 2008. So she's extremely familiar with Needham and what's important to us and how we like to do things. And, and was instrumental in getting that project done. And page 12 has a little bit of background on Margaret Donnelly Moran, the principal and overall head, Director of Planning and Development at Cambridge and Natalie Janssen, who is our project manager on a day-to-day basis. So that's what I've got to put forward to you and, and the rest of the time, as much as you want to take is for question and answer and guidance and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Just before I turn it over to questions from the board on page five, the summary of projects under consideration, is that in order of priority as far as you're concerned, or is that just kind of in, in no order depending on funding?
It's in the order that we are doing things as I, I wrote the slides up or updated them. And basically, all of these are very high priority, priority projects. And I think there you could remember the one A, B, C, D and E. But the other thing to think about is the priority is where is the low hanging fruit from a funding point of view? And for projects number one, two, and three, there is a very clearly defined path to obtaining the funding. The funds are there. It's been done before by other communities in Massachusetts by the Cambridge Housing Authority. And so those are the ones that we, we know we can get money to do first.
Thank you. Discussion. Oh, that's great. Great, great minds think alike.
Thank you for this, Reg. I appreciate the update. Am I misremembering? There was at one point a proposal for Linden Chambers that would have increased density there? Right?
You are not.
I'm not. Okay.
You're remembering correctly. Very good.
So, but right for the time being, you're looking at something that just redevelops the units there and then we'll see what happens with funding sources. I presume what was unsettled is that we really don't have a funding source identified for Linden Chambers. Now we're hopeful that there might be something in some infrastructure bill that may be helpful in the housing area.
Well, there are funding channels that don't have funds in them because this is a state subsidized product, property, and we share the same problem all of the other state funded subsidized projects, which is they're all aging like this.
Three are federally.
That's right.
Okay.
And, but we do have some ideas. Actually, we're working them right now with the Cambridge Housing Authority on where the money might come from. And this is, what you were remembering is in fact, as far as we've gotten in terms of redeveloping that property. So when we go before the CPC next month, we will say this is what we have, but it's back of the envelope. You know, we actually have to look at site conditions and zoning and utilities and wetlands and tenant relocation. And we've got to, you know, do a real schematic design that we, you know, we have a concrete proposal that we know what we need, want to do. We have to get the town on board on that as well. So this, that this is not just our decision, but it's a town decision. By that, I mean, not just the residents and tenants, but the neighbors are critical to bring in on this process, the planning board, the planning department and you folks. Fincom, you know, we need to, but we, we don't have anything real to, to share with anybody right now.
And then the CPC proposals that you have submitted for this year included one for an executive director position.
Yes.
So talk a little bit of more about the guidance that you've received around that for staffing models. I presume that that has to do with best practices for staffing and something related to the number of units, how that workload is.
So actually it has to do with doing this huge redevelopment project, you know, creates a greatly increased workload on Angie Maderos, who is our one and only, you know, executive leader of the Housing Authority. And we have a mission, number one, the first mission is to make sure that we run things in a safe, sanitary and attractive way and, you know, turn, keep the trains running on time with that. So there's going to be, it's already ramping up a workload right now, and we know that workload will be something we'll have to give. There are a lot of decisions and support that have, need to be made by the executive director and her staff and also support that needs to be provided to these projects as well as just running the day-to-day operations of the Housing Authority. We're proposing actually 50/50 fund sharing for that. So we're applying for half the cost of having a two years of position. And the other half, we're going to be paying out of our own reserves that we have left over from doing the High Rock Homes project. And, and after two years, the projection is we'll be able to build the cost of having this additional position into the regular budgets because it will be needed as part of the overall development process.
And then the last question I had, East Militia Drive, I guess I'm a little bit concerned about that property. It's been elusive. I guess I would certainly say at a minimum elusive. What other thoughts do you have for swing space? I'm curious.
Well, if you think about redoing the High Rock Estates, those 60 units that are bungalows. One way to do it is to by attrition vacate 10 or 20 of them. And then you redevelop them into the duplexes. Then you move another 20, you can move 40 others into those units because you've doubled the number. We also have to think about the same way with the Captain Robert Cook. Twenty, there are 30 families there. So doing a gut renovation is the least expensive if you can kind of clear people out of entire buildings or the, you know, or at least do it in a limited number of phases. So again, that has to be worked together with the High Rock Homes idea that I just shared with you here. So that's the kind of thing, exactly the kind of thing we're working very intensively on. There are experts both on Cambridge Housing Authority staff and also consulting firms that specialize in nothing but that particular challenge because here in Needham, we don't have, we're not Cambridge, we're not Chelsea. We don't have any place else for people to live temporarily that's in our town. If your kids are in the Needham Public School, you need to continue to live in Needham for obvious reasons. So.
Yeah. Okay. I'm, I'm glad to hear that you've thought through that because I just, I do worry about East Militia Drive and whether in fact it's truly going to be available on somebody's lifetime timeline. And, and what the strings might be that come associated with that property. So.
So it's not, it's, it's not essential to our plan. It would just give us a little bit more flexibility.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Yes, thank you, everyone for being here tonight and seeing you again, Reg and Angie and meeting you, Margaret. So I think just kind of going off of what Mary Ann just said and what I was thinking as well as, you know, listening to all of you saying how collaborative this process is from planning board to neighbors to residents. And then I just want to understand where you are right now as far as how the communication's been with, you know, the residents. And right now there's no concrete plan for placement and, and moving back in. But, you know, how have they felt about this, knowing that this is, you know, long overdue in some instances? But I guess the community input and what has been so far. And you say you have a lot of experts that are doing this work, consultants that do nothing but this work. But, you know, one can be said that the biggest experts are the people that are living this and that are experiencing this, that will experience this over the next five to 10 years. So just want to know what that has been like from your side of the table. And have there been, you know, positive conversations or has there been, you know, just a lot more questions asked?
Well, we, we had a neighbor on the selection committee that selected the Needham House, the Cambridge Housing Authority, just for starters during that selection period. But I'd like to, with your permission, turn this over to Margaret Moran, maybe to help with the answer to this. So she's been through this already many times before in Cambridge and, and before Needham as well. And we just held, in fact, our first tenants meetings last week on the 15th of December. Margaret, if that's okay, Margaret, can you go from here?
Sure, absolutely. And thank you again for having me tonight. So resident consultation is a real key aspect to kind of gaining support and knowledge about the project. And so, you know, in Cambridge, we've had or always have a real robust process and we look forward to having that same process in Needham with the Needham Housing Authority residents and with the larger Needham community. And as Reg said, we had our resident meeting last week, we did a meeting at noon time and then in a meeting in the early evening to walk the residents through some of the material that we've been training and, and meeting with the staff in the Needham Housing Authority Board to review and, and understand what the options are available to the Housing Authority, particularly around our initial phase of work, which is the repositioning of the federal portfolio in a way that may allow for more resources to come into Needham to support and maintain and upgrade of the federal housing stock. And so the meetings, you know, they were great, you know, not as well attended as I, I think all of us had hoped, but we're still living with the restrictions of trying to be practical with the different variants of COVID that are out there. So it was via Zoom. But the questions that the residents had, the questions that the staff and the board have had, have really been top notch, really getting to the core areas of importance, I think, to the residents and to the operations of the Housing Authority long term. And, you know, we've really appreciated the opportunity to kind of you know, provide some reassurance or some answers, but then also to kind of really listen to what the community i- is asking and, and looking and looking towards achieving. And so the, the meetings last week were really kind of the beginning phase. You know, we're going to follow up with a newsletter to all of the residents and then follow up with another round of meetings as we kind of narrow down the choices available to the Housing Authority, particularly around the federal portfolio. And then that will trigger a series of meetings at each of the individual sites where we would actually go through the application and, and what will come from the application in terms of any monetization activity or redevelopment and really look to engage the residents in all aspects of of the planning from the application development, finalizing the application to actually, you know, talking through the options for the renovation work and redevelopment. And then if it's significant enough, you know, if there's a relocation involved, then working through the details of relocation with the resident community as well. And then, you know, as that work kind of touches upon the larger Needham community, obviously looking to engage our neighbors and the, the various Needham boards and Needham Town officials that we would need to, to garner the support, you know, and, and having had the opportunity to be part of the team that did High Rock well over a decade ago, you know, it really took the village of, of all of Needham to make High Rock possible. And, and there was a lot of support and cooperation and really will on the part of the Needham officials to bring that to fruition. And, and I really applaud the work that Reg has been doing around keeping all of you informed of how the progress is going with their initiative and, and their plans to really do the best that we all can do to kind of protect, preserve and improve deeply affordable housing in Needham.
Great. Thanks, Ms. Moran. And just briefly moving forward, are there meetings scheduled or do you, you plan to have them monthly, quarterly? What's, what's the future look for as far as these types of meetings on resident input?
Um, so there's always at, at the regular Needham Housing Authority Board meetings is an update that is given to the board every month in terms of the initiatives. And there's a resident comment period, and that obviously will, will continue. I think our next round of meetings probably would happen in February as we work to narrow down the, the options that are available and we get really good and better information on the physical conditions of each of the, of the three sites. And we'll present those reports and those recommendations both to the staff and board of the Needham Housing Authority, but also to each of the resident communities affected. And then from that point on, you know, I would think we might get into a, a round of monthly meetings with the resident community as we work through the process of actually making the final selection of, of options and then working towards actually submitting the applications that HUD requires for these repositioning activities.
Great. Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you all for coming in. Yeah, I, to me, the, the 2019 capital plan is probably one of the top priorities that I have in terms of thinking of things that we can do to help improve affordable housing Needham. And these are building which for a variety of reasons, not the fault of anybody in this room, but just historic shortfalls in funding and public commitments being elsewhere. There's years of work that needs to be done. It's a very big project, but you've got the plan and 130 million dollars is a lot of money, but it's, it's, it's reasonable and you've got a plan to put that together. The, the chart that you give us that shows that you need five, approximately short of $5 million in leverage money over time from the, from the town CPC fund to bring in the funds from the other sectors. That's reasonable. That's exactly what we've anticipated would be likely. So I think you were on a great track. And we've had talk earlier here about what can the town government do? Can and can't do or what its role is in relation with. Can and can't do or what its role is in relation with the housing authority, which is an independent, uh, agency. We can help, we can help with the difficult issues of building community support. Help with the leverage funding and there may be some other things. This is going to be a somewhat charged process in a lot of ways. And, and I think that we can be supportive, not your supervisors in this, in this, in this work. Um, so whatever else I say is in that context too. Um, one of the big concerns that from my experience is that the, you've got a difficult, your, the, your core mandate, your, you know, the operation and management of the, of the facilities and looking to the needs of the tenants that you have, uh, and operating under all the rules and regulations that govern that in a situation in which there's a shortage of the kind of housing that you provide statewide and it's going to continue to be. That's a difficult line of work, which really taxes the bandwidth of your agency pretty heavily. You've got one executive director, you've got some, some support staff and five, uh, basically volunteer commissioners. So we can be, we can be supportive, but really, uh, we'll always try to make, to hope that we can be helpful to you and making sure that you're not, as you now take on this extra piece, that that works out in, in, that both of those things get done because they have to get done. You've got to operate 24/7 all the time that you're doing this. And you've got to get your existing 330 odd units up to code and into, into being good housing for the, for the present day and add extra units on the, on the, on the land that you've already got. So there's a lot of work to do. Bringing in the Cambridge Housing Group, to me, it's a great, it's a great thing because that gives you the extra bandwidth that you need to do this. I couldn't see how your volunteer board could do this without a real, uh, robust outside agency to kind of do most of it and report, report to you. So that's, that's a great step and I'm very pleased to see what you've said. The stuff that's in the CPC proj- project proposal all looks good to me. I think Mary Ann was asking, asking the question, how you manage the extra staffing? I know there's some rules around that, but whatever way you comply, if you can comply with those rules, then I think that's, you do need that extra staffing. And if there needs to be a different approach to that, then we'll need to talk about what we can do. Because at least ultimately you ought to be able to get the funding that you need in total to support everything. The current agency budget shouldn't be burdened with the cost of trying to do the capital plan. And the idea of doing the full capital plan, all of the elements, one at a time, but getting them all done. If we're going to do it, this is, this, this is the era. And this is the group of years when we're going, when we need, when we need to get it done. As we, I'm a little skeptical about the East Militia Heights thing. I think you've made a good argument for why to look at that and the idea that it might help in certain ways. I guess when I've heard discussions about East Militia Heights over the years, which of course is Department of the Army property that is slated to be, um, disposed of at some, some point. I'm just concerned that some of those discussions, not necessarily by your, the people who work with housing, but by some discussions in the community are kind of simplistic. And I'm not sure that they will come to fruition in anything like the kind of time. Cause we've worked on some long dealings with outside agencies that stretch on literally for decades beyond the period of time when we thought they were going to happen. Uh, it's not that they don't ever happen, but they don't happen in the way that, that you can, the idea of counting on this. So if I hear you saying that you're not, it would be helpful if you had East Militia Heights. If it works out the way in the optimistic way, that's great. If it doesn't, it's critical that you not be relying on it because you do have to meet the needs of the tenants in terms of tenant, uh, relocations and any other issues that inconveniences that happen. Because this has got to happen while people are continuing to live at the authority properties or be relocated in a limited sense. Uh, if need be. So you've got a lot on the plate, but as long as East Militia Heights doesn't, isn't a must have, then, and you can deal with it if it's, if, if it doesn't work out in the optimistic scenario, then that's good for me. I, it's great to seeing you, to see the housing authority do this. I know what a tremendous commitment this is for your board and everybody that's involved. And, and, and while respecting our respective roles and, 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 and elements of this, the things that I think the town is, the commitments that you've asked for are reasonable. And hopefully we can get this done and be, make it better for current tenants, future tenants and the town as a whole. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Matthews. Um, Mr. King?
Yeah, hey, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is really exciting. Thank you. Um, a quick question. I know you mentioned that the costs or estimates do not reflect pandemic induced increases in supply chain issues. But does anyone in the room know what is the rule of thumb for percentage increase that people?
100%. If you were checking a couple of years, a couple of months, three months ago. But, you know, there's so much supply chain disruption that, and nobody knows that answer right now. However, um, um, one of these CPA funding applications is going to go in there and from a very detailed level, assess the existing conditions and identify at a very granular level, what needs to be fixed up for these monetizations. Um, and, and then that will, hopefully things will settle down from a cost point of view. Unfortunately, in the state, and we know this in many other areas like the schools area, um, yeah, well, there are various state regulations that increase the cost of construction anyway over the private sector. So that has, you know, this is sort of, uh, piling on in terms of what's going on with the pandemic.
It's not the answer I want.
I'm sorry.
It's tough out there. Um, so I, I want to thank you and really give a lot of credit to you and your board. Um, I think you really took the bull by the horns with, there's been a discussion here for a long time, way back of doing something with these projects. And it seems now that we have a plan in place, as you heard, this board support echoes Mr. Matthews' comments, supports these projects. I think it's well laid out, um, you know, hiring a Cambridge consultant to help with this. Terrific move. Um, and, and as far as the Militia Drive property, I would like to see kind of the plan B of what you would do for request for that 1.5 million if it doesn't come to fruition.
We'll ultimately go through the CPC process and maybe wind up withdrawing it if it does make sense.
Exactly. But I'm saying, and you're not, not for this year, but just in your mind's eye of, if we are looking for another 1.5 that's available, where would we put it? Because I think, you know, there's a chance of getting outbid or of course, as we talked about it, not being ready. But, um, whatever it is, we support you moving forward with these projects and look forward to updates regularly as you move forward.
Thank you so much for your support. And if I may give a shout out to our Executive Director, Angie Maderos as well. I've been through four executive directors at the Needham Housing Authority since I joined. And she is the first one who's been willing to tackle this priority on behalf of the Needham Housing Authority and the town of Needham, if I may say, because God knows we don't have enough affordable housing in this town. I don't care how much money you make. There is no affordable housing, whatever your level of income, uh, especially if you're, um, very constrained.
Well, thank you and thanks, Ms. Maderos. Thanks for all your help. Have a great night.
Have a, have a happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks again. Next item on the agenda, Director of Public Works, uh, we have a sidewalk program update and Highland Avenue update. Ms. Lustig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm here with, um, Ryan Hoyland.
How are you?
Is the Superintendent of Highway and part of both of these projects.
Terrific.
Um, the first project that I'm here to talk to you about is an update on the Public Works, um, on the sidewalks, no removal program that we have during the winter. Um, over the last several months, uh, members of the DPW schools and police have met um, to discuss the current sidewalk program and sidewalk routes. It's my understanding that these routes had not been evaluated in quite a long period of time and certainly hadn't been evaluated since we had relocated the Hillside School to the Williams site. So we conducted a small working group over the summer, um, to evaluate our current routes with a primary focus again on school, um, commuting routes. So we're looking for anything that's within one mile of a school. Um, we were able to use the town's GIS system in order to help analyze our current routes. And what we really found was that the routes that we have are very much in line with what our expectations are for, uh, people who are trying to walk to their schools. So because our schools are so spread out within our community, all of the routes that we're currently plowing are really within one mile of the existing schools. Uh, we went over it with the, um, transportation coordinator and the police department and evaluated and made sure that all the routes that we currently have are being fully utilized to see if we should be re, um, reconfiguring what our current plowing routes are. And the, um, major conclusion was there were two very small areas that we had. So right now in Needham, we plow about 54 miles of sidewalk. We have six different routes that we use. The, uh, change that we found was less than a mile. Um, basically there was one section on hunting that really didn't have, it was outside a mile and it really didn't have a lot of homes where you would have, uh, children walking. And then, um, there's a small section of Great Plain Avenue, uh, where we have a retaining wall that is effectively in the public way and is very difficult for us to navigate our equipment. Our equipment is sized such that it basically is the exact width of what a sidewalk is, a standard sidewalk is. So it requires a lot of technical skill on behalf of our staff to make sure we hit that dead on. And, um, in this particular area that, uh, it was so constrained that we really couldn't do that and, and operate safely. So we, uh, reconfigured that route so that kids can cross on either side to the other side of Great Plain Ave and that one small section of Great Plain Ave. But it wasn't a significant enough section for us to really rethink what our current routes are and see about reconfiguring them or remastering them. Um, we did take a quick look at public infrastructure, business areas and transit areas to see how we were servicing them. And again, it was a bit mixed. We didn't have a plan that focused on them. The plan that we have really in place is focused on our school and our school walking. So what we are proposing for 2021 is like I had indicated, a very small modification to our routes, um, based on those two modifications I listed and continuing our downtown pilot program. We know there's been an interest, um, in researching to see what is available to provide additional services in the downtown. And, um, unfortunately we were not able to find enough excess capacity to add significant, um, miles in, in that area, uh, but we will continue with the pilot as we had last year. What we, um, do have as a possible recommendation for future years, so not for this year, is a look at potentially adding a seventh route. Um, actually, let me take one step back. The other change that we found was that, um, we wanted to look at areas where we did have a bylaw in place that would, um, require the business owner, the occupant, in order to shovel their own sidewalks. So areas where we didn't have to do, um, plowing because that was part of the obligation of the, um, property owner. We, in looking through this, realized that there was a bit of a flaw in the way that our bylaw was drafted. Our bylaws really focused towards commercial entities and we have a lot of non-commercial entities in our business areas. We have churches, we have a hospital. They're not required under our bylaw to remove snow. I think they do. I don't think that's been an issue, uh, particularly I know the hospital does a very good job of removing snow, but there's no requirement for them to do that. We also found the same thing for, um, uh, housing developments and, um, multi-unit housing. So again, there's no requirement, even though that somebody may be, um, having an economic benefit or a public benefit, um, as a result of their property. So we are looking into potential bylaw changes that would modify that. So essentially it would focus on areas within our business, um, corridor, nonprofits and areas where there's either public access required or somebody is actually using their property for financial gain. Um, so we're working on drafting that, um, which we think will help augment our current internal services. For expanding our services, one of the, um, options that, um, the highway department has presented is the addition of a seventh route to our existing program. Um, this seventh route would essentially focus on our commercial and our transit oriented areas. So it would start on Central and go all the way down Highland Avenue. Um, the idea would be that we would be able to expand our services to the downtown. We would have to do a walkthrough of this to make sure that the equipment that we would normally buy in order to do this work successfully has the, uh, width, the clearance and the capacity to go in. We do know that we would have to figure out the logistics on when we would do clearing, operating some of our equipment during the day could be dangerous. We have very large blowers that are on the front of these pieces. And so we really wouldn't want to do it when there's a lot of commercial activity going on. So it still may be supplemental in nature and that businesses will still have to continue clearing during the day, but we may be able to go in in that evening and do a full clearing. As we know, it can be difficult for some businesses to clear a full ADA accessible path. Um, so that would be an additional service, which obviously would require additional resources. So we would be requesting an additional piece of equipment in order to do this. The sidewalk tractors that we use, um, run, uh, just shy of $200,000. Um, we have a six to seven year replacement cycle on those pieces. And unfortunately, because of the way our snow program works, the most successful pieces really don't have a lot of utility outside of the snow season. Their track machines, they're very, very effective. Um, I don't think the town of Needham would have done so well in the 2015 snow season if we didn't have these. We know other communities that have wheeled machines, um, that are a little more versatile and a little bit less, um, as far as cost. But they really are not as effective when we get into higher accumulations, the way that these equipment, this piece of equipment is. Um, and additionally, we would need an additional operator. So our current snow program is built out to, at full capacity, when we're fully staffed, to operate all of our equipment, um, have a hand crew and have a sidewalk crew. We don't have additional capacity right now, um, in order to operate this seventh piece of equipment. And as far as, um, the option or potential of outsourcing this to the private sector, like we do about half of our, our plowing routes, uh, the town, the city of Newton actually did an RFP to see if any contractors would put in bids for snow plowing and they did not, on sidewalks, and they did not receive any bids. So there really isn't a market for this, the way there is a market for road plowing. And then the third option we sort of had was sort of this idea of basically blowing up our entire program and thinking about different options. We've heard a lot of communication about what people expect when it comes to snow removal. We get a lot of questions about why we do certain sides of the road and not other sides of the road, where some people who we do plow, who don't want to be plowed. And so this would really be looking at all sorts of options to figure out what our intended outcomes are. If our outcome is that all sidewalks are, um, cleared, you know, a potential idea would be to require residents to clear the frontage of their property and then allow DPW to really focus on hard to clear areas like corners and intersections where it can be very difficult for a resident using a shovel or their own home plow, uh, snow blower in order to go in and clear it themselves. So really allow us to focus on the difficult areas, the parts of Central Ave where there's no berm and there's no place to blow the snow, um, as well as, you know, other types of areas where it would be more difficult for a resident to clear themselves. So, you know, we're sort of open to lots of options as we move forward. We think we have a good plan, um, for this winter. And I do want to just add a little bit, um, on top of the memo that I had submitted and how we're going to be approaching this particular winter. I think I've, um, spoken before about the challenges that we're dealing with this year, about how we are short-staffed, um, as well as having difficulty recruiting contractors. And I have talked to the school superintendent about a potential scenario where if we are, can, and continue to be short, particularly on our own staffing, redirecting some of our sidewalk efforts to our road and lot efforts and in an attempt to get the road safe for public safety, as well as to get the schools open in the morning. And what we would do in that case is we would pull up to four people from our sidewalk program and we would put them in heavy pieces of equipment. We would maintain two pieces of equipment to plow from our schools out and clear substantial drop off and pickup zones. And then probably 24 to 48 hours, just like we do with our snow hauling program for clearing lots in the downtown, we would come in and then we would clear all the sidewalks. So the outcome would be the same, all the sidewalks in town would be cleared. The speed at which most people in Needham are used to it would be a little bit longer than normal. We do know of communities that do this as a regular practice. We're not proposing this as a regular practice. This is sort of an emergent situation. How do we deal with a staff shortage, which is possible during an event to make sure that we can get the schools open? Cause I know that's a priority.
Absolutely. And thank you. I know we have to start thinking creatively with this shortage. I do know those corners, when you talk about, when you're on a walking route, um, you know, things do tend to pile up on those side streets because they don't, they don't take the corners. You know, that's not part of the route. And I, I think that would be helpful. And I I I think that would be helpful uh to homeowners. I actually live on a corner, so I'm familiar with it. I know other people might. I I just had a question on the, it's the ninety-nine thousand, so the actual staff person for this piece of equipment. I understand the need for the equipment, and it says only a small portion would be dedicated to the snow program. So I'm assuming that would be a full-time employee for the year, and then how would that person be repurposed throughout the year?
Uh, this is actually a submission we've made, um regardless of whether or not we choose to expand the snow program um as part of our budget process. Um, right now, we only have um ten individuals in our um highway division. It's very difficult to break up a crew in the summer um and run two separate crews for um for our preparation work. We do all of our preparation work for our roadway paving and house, which um reduces the cost of our paving and improves our product. So essentially, we end up having one large crew, which is not as efficient. So the idea would be having this additional labor would allow us to break it up, our staff up. We have two foremen and two separate crews, and they would be able to do, get more production out in the non-winter months as well. So there is an impact and a benefit. The the full cost of the employee is folded in here, but obviously, that cost has many other benefits to the community outside of the snow program.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Um, discussion.
Um, yeah, real quick.
Yes.
And you do it again, say, to your scenario. I know it's a point of pride.
So I think the school's opening is definitely a point of pride. Um, I I think whenever we've talked to him about, you know, five AM or three AM when we have a a snow. I mean, there's a reality that we live in New England, and I think there's an expectation on his part that the people who live in this town are aware that it snows here. It can be icy here. People have to proceed with caution when we have weather events. Um, so he was amenable to the idea that we would not do our regular sidewalk clearing. Um, and instead, we would focus on clearing a broader pickup and drop-off zone. So that way, for those individuals who can't walk to um school because of um the sidewalks haven't been sufficiently cleared, that they can be dropped off and safely dropped off by their school.
Great. Thank you. Um, oh, Marcus, then Mary Ann.
Yeah, um, going off of what Kevin just said and what you just said, Karis, and appreciate you both being here tonight. Um, for those um areas that you're kind of uh contemplating having for heavier pickup and drop-off zones, or for those families and people that don't have the means to get to those and their their areas are not plowed and they're only available to walk, um what would be the kind of solution to that? And what has uh Dan said about that?
So I can certainly reach out to the schools and find out their their answer to that question. I I don't know it off the top of my head. I do know of other communities that have dealt with pissing or other issues um when they've had issues with clearing sidewalks. So I would certainly ask um what they have in place for individuals who uh may not have means um in order to get to school and if they have any programs for them.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to know. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Mary Ann?
I was just going to um weigh in, Karis, that I do like the addition of option seven, the seventh route. I do think that's responsive to a lot of community members who have asked particularly about some of those transit-oriented routes and the ability to access them. So if we can do that, um I think that would be a plus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I agree with that. I it's uh it's important and it's something that, you know, moving forward and forward-looking, I think it's a great idea. So, thank you. Um, and so far, we've received zero complaints on snow removal. Um, so you're doing an excellent job. But in all seriousness, thank you for that presentation. Um, and then next item on the agenda is Highland Ave.
Um, so this item is um sort of in response, we had done a survey earlier in this year to look at the Highland Ave corridor, and I think there were a lot of questions as to why we were doing this survey to look at this particular area. So the Needham Department of Public Works, um as the Highway Division is a lead, has um is in the process of submitting an application to look at the Highland Ave South, which is Webster Street intersection um all the way to the Town Common um as a potential option to be put on the Transportation Improvement Plan with the state. Um, this is sort of an extension of the work that's being done right now um between Webster and Newton Center and would look at doing a similar type of multimodal renovation to that area to deal with um various issues that we may have, such as traffic congestion, the way that um traffic flows through those intersections, um improvements that we'd like to make for uh bike infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure, um crossings, um and and tie that into the work that the state has already done. Um, this is actually part of a vision that Ryan has had, I think, for a little while to look at um the entire corridor of um Highland Ave or Needham and Newton border all the way um through the town center and down Dedham Ave um to the Dedham border. The reason that this particular project was picked first to start that off is that it it's very favorable as far as how the state scores these projects. So first of all, it connects to a project they've already invested in. So there's that continuity aspect of it. And then in this particular area, we do have many intersections that will rate higher because they are older intersections and they may not process traffic as efficiently as they could, and it could cause some backup um after we have these improvements on the other parts of Highland Ave. It also um addresses one particular area that is on the state's register for a high crash, which is West at Highland. Um, and we've actually done an evaluation with our own internal engineering staff, um a consultant that we have brought on board uh to help us with this project, T E C, who we started engaging with on the Complete Streets project and really focuses in on transportation network improvements and has done a lot of these projects through the state of Massachusetts and um working with Mast dot to really evaluate that particular intersection and potential improvements that could be made there. So we feel that this particular project will score quite well as part of the program and then get us into this um opportunity where essentially the town puts forth um funds in order to design um this particular stretch of road. And we'd likely do it in sections that probably wouldn't be done in in one full project. Um, and then the state would then come in and they would construct and manage the entire project. Um, so we think it's an opportunity to get some state funds into the town of Needham in an area that we presently don't have on our list of projects as far as a full, whole-scale development. But we've heard of a lot of public um interest in making improvements in in this location. Um, so what we've provided for you is as an executive summary of the project. Um, and it also um indicates that the timing on it. Um, Ryan has indicated to me, not that he plans on leaving tomorrow, but that he probably won't be here by the time we get the funds. Um, usually, the preliminary process on a project like this takes a couple of years. Um, then you get scored, and then you get put into their five-year capital plan. So it can take seven to eight years, although we've been told by other communities, they've had projects accelerated. There are projects that drop off of the tip. Um, there are projects that take longer. I think we saw that happen with our project on um Highland and Needham Street. So we thought it was very important to get this project in the queue. That um survey was really the first part of a public process, and there will be several meetings that will be hosted with T E C. Um, T E C, we we opted not to bring them in for this meeting to explain the survey, um but that will be a huge part of their public process uh that they will go through to get input from the community about what features we're looking for in the design of this um, these intersection and roadway improvements.
Great. Thank you um for this. Clearly, it's something, I I think one of my takeaways is that it's one point three miles from Webster Street to Great Plain. It seems like forever sometimes going through there. So just there is so much going on in that corridor, as we all know, and the traffic and pedestrian safety. Uh, just two questions that I had. Number one, are we envisioning any takings along there if we were to do some of this uh projected work? And then second, on the the pedestrian crossings, are we thinking of the beacons to get people across? Or what type of crossings will we anticipate upgrading?
Sure, um, so taking so far, we assume none.
Okay.
Um, that's another reason this was selected. There's no conservation issues, there's no bridges. That amount has a bridge. We looked at a lot of infrastructure. No taking. So it's a very clean project that will dovetail current Mast dot and score well. It also will include uh West at Hillside, which is up on their crash site.
Um, as far as the pedestrian crossings go, it could be a whole myriad of solutions. So I don't know if it's necessarily just the beacons. Um, I know we have a study from um G P I that looks at adding one beacon and one additional mid-block crossing um between where Dunkin' Donuts is roughly and the um Memorial Park because of all the traffic that comes back and forth from the high school. Um, but there's a whole bunch of different solutions out there that we've seen that other communities are implementing um about how to do traffic calming measures, how to look at pedestrian safety, how to shorten um, how to shorten distances that pedestrians are crossing. Um, so we may be looking at a whole way of trying to effectively slow down traffic in that particular area um because I've seen people cross there all the time. It seems like nobody crosses by an intersection. They all kind of make their own path. So if you can get traffic to go at a speed that's safe for people to cross um in either direction, it becomes less important um to have a specific uh crosswalk. Um, Tony Delgazo would always say, the way to slow down traffic is not to throw pedestrians into traffic. It's to calm the traffic itself. So we'd be looking at measures to try to get the speed um better flowed. So it's less stop and go. There's a lot of stop and go there right now. Um, and then also to make the speeds more moderate, so that way pedestrians can navigate that more safely.
That's great. We have a new constituted transportation uh committee that I bet will want to have a lot of input in this project as we move forward. Discussion.
Well, listen.
Even though it's a long way away, it's a long journey, but even clearly, it's it's an important stretch of roadway. And I guess one thing that I'm interested, that I kind of get out of this is that it seems that if you're able to moderate the speeds, that you may actually be able to move more vehicles through safely and take care of, to make sure that the pedestrian safety is 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 there too, which is, that seems like a must-have because there's more, a little, you know, traffic seems to go up a percent a year, but over a period of a decade or whatever, it gets to be a lot.
If I could add to that. So currently, um, our traffics are based on loops. It's a magnetic detection. Um, the modern ones are video detection, so you can increase and change the uh traffic. They also talk to each other, and they can also see pedestrians so that if a pedestrian is jogging through an intersection, hits the button, the solo, run across, it quickens the time to release traffic, and all the intersections can possibly talk to each other to pulse the traffic through. So you don't zoom to the next one, stack up with traffic. So it pulses it through, and you're absolutely correct. It processes vehicles quicker and pedestrians and safer. So it's all about the safety, calminates all users. So we're excited about it. Thank you.
That's great. And I do remember that stretch across from the high school, Highland Avenue, and speaking with Tony about that, it would always say, why can't we just add a crosswalk here? And you learn how many rules there are around crosswalks. You just can't put, put them wherever you want. And I think there's a good solution to try to calm things down and slow it down for another alternative. Mary Ann?
Karis, I'm just wondering when you're thinking about for the first public session to talk about the survey and share some of those results and get some input from people.
So right now, we um are in the process of executing a contract with T E C for the ten percent design. So that's sort of the first step. What they'll do is they'll do a ten percent design for the entire stretch, and then we'll do twenty-five percent designs sort of as the state indicates how to break it up. So it might get broken up into three or four projects um that we would then focus on ten, twenty-five percent design. So I would imagine, once we have those contracts executed, we'd be looking late summer, I'm sorry, late winter, early spring to start that public engagement process.
Like this, this winter. I'm just checking. We aren't out to.
So next winter, ten percent will give all the survey of what's existing, um what the layout is. And so we can talk options and give us some concepts so the public can have a conceptual that because the public input's going to be critical. It's actually mandated by Mast dot, the whole process. So ten percent gets us there, and it may be that certain stuff, and it gets us to a scoring position. So Mast dot will score it and our local M P O, which we have members that sit on these boards. And um it may come in sections. So some will score very high. We can accelerate that into the capital plan. And because they're uh one or two million dollars, what can happen, and it's happened to communities that we interviewed from application to contract was as quickly as three years because they had a design. We're similarly in one of those positions, so we're interested in getting the scoring. And if we can get commitment to accelerate it, use federal and state monies to build out an intersection. It's actually very fast so that they have to spend down the money at the end of the year. If other projects have slowed down or there's monies available and we're ready to go, it'll accelerate. That's that's a possibility. We don't know if it'll happen to the scoring.
Is that the western Highland intersection or a different one?
Yeah, so we're thinking west at Highland because of the crash trading at West at Hillside, potentially all the way down to Rosemary at um Highland.
That's going to score really well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments?
Which have great process.
True. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for having me.
Enjoy the night. Next item on the agenda, town manager.
Mr. Chair, um, two follow-up items. The board discussed the budget priorities at your meeting, which was only last week, at the point on the fourteen. Um, and not having heard any major changes, I would ask the board to adopt the budget priorities to help inform the capital and operating budget provisions for F Y twenty-three.
Thank you, and we have seen this numerous times. Is there such a motion?
I moved that the board approved the statement of budget priorities for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Here now, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Aye.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. Janus, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and the capital plan, you've seen, this is the third time that you've seen it. Um, and we've made um presentation, we've made some changes based on your feedback. And the most recent changes from the last version are that the quiet zone uh design and construction have been moved into the funding category in F Y twenty-four and F Y twenty-five.
Is there a motion um on the capital improvement plan to approve?
The move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to any further discussion on this capital improvement plan? Seeing none, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. And thank you for putting this capital improvement plan together. Um, we've discussed it at length at our prior meetings. I know it's a lot of work and it really set, it does set our agenda moving forward uh for our expenses and uh look forward to working within it and forwarding to the finance committee. Thank you. Town manager report.
Um, just one item. I wanted to report that um as a result of um work, some great work on the part of our public health department, they were able to acquire a hundred and eighty testing kits that then they were able to distribute to um our community partners to distribute to those in the greatest need. And those include, for instance, the Housing Authority, Community Council, um Youth and Family Services, um and the Council on Aging as an example. So uh those are the uh entities that are most closely uh on the ground with folks who might need them and are at the most risk. Um, you may also um have seen, it'd be hard to avoid, uh Governor Baker's um issuing an advisory that all individuals should wear masks inside. Um, our our public health um guidance is still the same as it was. Um, while masks aren't mandatory, they're um absolutely helpful, uh particularly if anybody is an immune compromised or a difficult um health situation. Uh, get vaccinated, avoid crowds, wash your hands. Um, so I did want to note, Mr. Chair, that um our COVID website, which is uh located at the banner at the top of our website, is updated frequently. There's some great information there about um what might happen if you um get notified by somebody that you're a close contact um and how to, you know, explains what to do for all categories of people. So there's also data, needed specific data about cases. So it's really a great resource. If you have any questions, um start there and then uh people can always call Public Health.
Great. Thank you very much for that, and we anticipate the Health Department uh coming in the beginning of the year to discuss further.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
For January.
In January. Thank you so much. Um, next item on the agenda, board discussion, goal-setting update. I just wanted to recap that we had a uh goal-setting meeting. We went over uh prior goals that we had and the status of those goals. Uh, I believe we took one off um and then had some clarification for a couple others. Um, very productive session and really sets where we're going um as we move forward, a nice roadmap. So it was great to see all the things that we've done and also um give a roadmap of the things that we want to get done, including meeting with the plan. Including meeting with the planning and affordable housing issues as well as many issues that run the gamut. Racial equity and, and so forth. And we can, that can be viewed on YouTube. That was a owl meeting that we had, so people can feel free to tune in and see our discussion that lasted about two hours. On our goals and we will update those goals again over the summer. Mary Ann.
Can I just say that I don't necessarily think of it so much as goal setting as a review of where we were. I think sometimes when people hear goal setting, they think that we are starting from scratch again and looking at everything. But in fact, we're in mid-year and people are in process with the goals that we set as we're working toward town meeting. A number of these are like two-year goals, but at any rate, so, so it's not really a sea change. It's more refinement. And everybody being able to understand where we are, especially with any changes that might be in place because of pandemic issues. And staffing shortages and things like that. So it's good to have a level set and just know where we are.
Absolutely. And it's great with the new member, Mr. Keen, to be there as well and get a taste of, of the goals as we move forward. So any further discussion? Okay. Are there any committee reports? Okay. Hearing none, ask for a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Sir, a second. Second. Marcus.
Aye.
Dan.
Yes.
Mary Ann.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Thank you. Good night, everyone. Happy holidays. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Take care.
Happy holidays, everybody.